Are we ready? Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the work session to order and thank you all for coming out and helping us this evening. Suzanne, no roll call, correct?
No, it's work session, so we're a little less formal.
Formal, thank you. All right, so this evening I'd like to just start out with a little bit of guidance on how we're going to do things this evening. I really appreciate you all coming out. I know we have quite a few people signed up for public comment. And I just want everyone to know that we will allow three minutes for each person to visit. We would ask that if someone has covered a topic or a statement that you would like to share with the council, you're welcome to agree with them, but we would appreciate new information from each speaker. And that way we can be efficient with our time and your time. But we do want to hear from you all. We have prepared a, but also I want you to know that during the public comment portion, there will not be a debate or an exchange back and forth with the council. So we'll hear your comments, we'll take them to heart. Most of us take notes and then we'll move to the next speaker. Okay? Counsel, anything else you want to add? Okay, thank you. So we have prepared a little bit of a history. I asked a couple of council members that had been with us for a while and the staff to help us kind of put together a history of where we've been and how this all came to be in the first place. Beginning in 2008, actually. So I'm going to ask Carol to help me with talking through these slides. And if you would move to slide one, please. Here's our agenda for the slides this evening, the introduction, a bit of history, other community approaches. We have some other communities in the state that do pass through a sales tax as well to their school district. And so we are sharing that information to kind of have an idea what other folks are doing and what that might look like. We have some options that have been presented to us by our attorney. And we'll go through those just for a matter of being complete and thorough. Then we'll have some discussion amongst the council. And then we'll open public comment. And then after we close public comment, we will have a discussion amongst us on how we want to move forward. There will be no vote taken this evening. We can't, we might come to a consensus to give direction to staff for us to move forward. But there won't be a decision made this evening. Because we are not in a actual public meeting. It's public, but it's just a work session. We don't make decisions in a work session. So with that, Eric, if we could go to the next slide. Thank you. Carol, I'm going to let you talk about the history up until 2016 because neither Catherine nor I were on the council at that time. And that's when the question went to the voters and such. So if you would help us with getting us off in that direction, please.
Thanks, Mayor Case. And Mayor Case asked me to do this and I wasn't sure if she said it's because I had institutional knowledge or I should be institutionalized. But nonetheless, I did serve on council in 2016 when the question on a ballot was given to the citizens to determine if the citizens had an appetite for a sales tax and increased sales tax specifically for our school district. And I go back to 2008 in this history. And those of us who lived in the community know the impact of the recession at that time on our our economy statewide and certainly in the community. At that time, Governor Hickenlooper addressed the state educators at a conference in Denver and said, it's not going to get better, folks. You better be looking for some local funding sources. And then shortly after that, the previous Chief Financial Officer Brian Gustafson, he made a, an appeal to the community and said, look, we're losing this much money. In this case, he estimated $15 million because of the impact of the recession and the district at that time reduced its budget. They cut the staff, they started charging parents for transportation and some other services. And the bottom line is the district did their best to get very lean. And he said, we've got to work on ways to increase revenue. Next slide, please. So in 2013, a community task force formed and some of you in the room may have been on that task force. I understand there were 23 members. That included folks that did not live in Woodland Park, but lived in the county and actually outside of the county. Some of our business owners were on that task force as well. And as a task force, they agreed to look at these four critical areas that you see on the slide. And I think first and foremost was student recruitment and retention. And then secondly, employment recruitment and retention. And at that time, we also had some major issues with what we now call the middle school with a big hole in the roof, you know, that was just, that was reality and that's, it was an expensive hole to repair. In 2015, the task force reported back to the council because they had some recommendations that would require the city council and the city of Woodland Park to assist them with. And they sent it by letter. And by letter, they made these observations. There were some options that we could use as a community to address the really serious and critical financial stress that the school district was in. One of them was a mill levy option or a mill levy override for that matter. Their assessment already is that our mill levy is one of the highest in the region.
Please, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, next slide, 2015. The mill levy was one of the highest in the regions. They tried a similar mill levy override in 2011 and it was voted down. So a mill levy override did not seem to be an appropriate option at that time. And then a very novel approach was the discussion of a new sales tax within the city limits. At that time, that 1.09 recommendation would have increased our retail tax to 7.99. And that put us about in the middle of the pack for the state. But I do want to note that now our total tax in Woodland Park City Limits is 8.49, which puts us in the top 5%. And the argument, and I think it was a legitimate argument, is that that tax would be distributed across a broad base of stakeholders. And as with all of our tax revenue, it did include taxes that were paid by tourists that come through our community. So that sales tax option is the one that they recommended. Next slide. So there were a number of public hearings, some were conducted by the city council, some were in community forums. And I noticed a friend of mine here in the back, Mike Parino, and I think Mike may have even facilitated some of those community forums to talk about the pros and cons of asking the citizens to vote on a 1.09 sales tax. That's not an easy sell in a community as conservative as ours. Because the school district itself was not authorized to initiate a ballot question, they asked for city council sponsorship of a ballot question. It could have also been done by citizens initiative by petition, but it seemed like the most expedient way to approach this for a very dire need for the school district was to ask the city council to sponsor that ballot initiative. The city council, and I was on the city council at the time, agreed that ballot initiative, we sponsored by ordinance, a ballot question in April of 2016. What Mayor Case has added to here is the actual wording from the ballot question. Now, there was, I probably skipped over this in a previous slide. There was a little bit to sweeten the deal on this tax and that was to relieve an existing mill levy of 6.25. That 6.25 mill levy was to pay for a bond that in my recollection paid for the construction of Summit Elementary School. I may be incorrect on which of the schools it was used to pay for, but it was a bond. Bonds have to be voted on by the citizens. By that time in 2016, the bond had been paid down low enough that they could trade out the bond for something called a certificate of participation. It's a lesser amount, does not require the vote of citizens. And they were going to retire the 6.75 mill levy for Woodland Park residents. And that included not only residential, but commercial property as well. And that was, you know, certainly an incentive for many voters. Number one, those that realized the school district needed the money desperately. And number two, there was a little bit of an extra bonus for those of us who lived in Woodland Park. Let's go to the next slide, please. And that's the rest of that ballot question. The ballot question, and I think many were surprised in a conservative community like ours, passed. 1,363 for and 916 against. Okay? In 2016, there was an IGA sign and a lot of people have heard this IGA acronym here for a couple of months now. It's an intergovernmental agreement. That lays out the responsibilities of the two parties, in this case, the school district and the city of Woodland Park. Not necessarily the city council, but the city of Woodland Park. City of Woodland Park agreed to collect that tax on behalf of the school district and then redistribute it back to the school district. I think it ended up being on a monthly basis and I believe that's still the case. And in that IGA was this wording that you're seeing on the screen now that laid out some very, I would say, top level 30,000 feet uses for that tax. That same wording was also then in an ordinance, the city council had to pass in order to make this all happen. So when people talk about the categories that the BOE president briefed last week about how the tax was spent in 20, the 23, 24 school year and how they intend to spend it in the upcoming school year. That's where those categories came from, from the intergovernmental agreement and from the ordinance that was passed by the city council. Next slide, please. These are some just milestones. I think most of you by now, if you've lived in the community for a year, are familiar with these particular dates. But it is important to understand that an ordinance was passed by the council in order to make this tax collection occur. And that ordinance is one of the authorities that gives the city council the responsibility and a pretty awesome responsibility to overlook and oversee the use of that tax. We talked about that IGA. During the period of 2017 to 2020, the chief financial officer and the superintendent would annually come to the city council and brief about how that tax had been used. All of us deserve to do that for our taxpayers. And they also hit up a lot of other organizations. They briefed the Kiwanis Club. They briefed the two political party organizations. They wanted to get the message out to the community. Thank you so much for the gift you've given us. This is how we're using it. In 2020, all of us suffered through, I hope, something that never ever happens to us again, and that was the pandemic. So public meetings were just a little bit harder to hold and they did not come forward. They, the school district, didn't come to the city council to brief anymore. But they continued to produce a very detailed narrative in the budget summary for every school year up until 2022. In 2023, the council directed the staff to go back and look at that IGA. In the IGA was a very specific requirement that the pass-through fee that the city charges the school district to collect the money and redistribute it was pretty darn low, but it's supposed to be reviewed every five years. We missed that deadline. And so the council said, you know, it's probably time to go back and look at that IGA. Our attorney looked at the IGA, said, no, there's some things here that need to be updated for the community's, you know, sense of what's going on with that sales tax. That new draft that the council agreed to was then submitted to the school district for their review. And it, and ultimately, the school district agreed to the new review or to the new IGA wording. And that was signed very recently by President Bates and by Mayor Case. Excuse me, it was actually by Mayor LaBarre. Next slide. That's the Reader's Digest version. It's pretty cut and dry. There's, there obviously was a lot of other things that were going on in the background while this march from 2016 to 2024 occurred. But when that ballot initiative went to the voters in 2016, there, I think, were six other communities, municipalities or tax districts in the state that has similar approaches to what Governor Hickenlooper had challenged everyone in the state to do is find your own damn money. And those six, of those six, two have since sunsetted those taxes and three still exist. And then the fourth one, of course, is Woodland Park. And as I understand, Cripple Creek will also introduce an initiative, I think on the November ballot for something similar in Cripple Creek. But I'd like to very quickly go over what these other three communities are doing in terms of how their taxes came to be. Aspen, you think Aspen's got tons of money. Why would they even worry about this? But in 2012, Aspen voters approved a 0.3% sales tax. Very generically for the purpose of supporting local schools, but they also built into it periodic, periodic sunsets that would force it back to a vote by the citizens in a general election. And it was last renewed in 2022. I do know that in our new IGA with the school district, we're asking for 1% pass-through of the total collected. Aspen asked for a 2% administrative fee. But here's the interesting thing about Aspen, and I want the rest of the council to keep this in the back of your mind. A nonprofit organization collects money in Aspen and then redistributes it to the school district based on invoices. It's an appointed board. And they have a separate accounting system from the school district and from the city of Aspen. And then they have some built in into their IGA, they have some built in reasons to suspend the tax collection on a number of different causes. Next slide. Blackhawk, and we all know Blackhawk is one of the other three communities in the state that authorizes gambling. In 2008, they approved a 1.5 sales tax, but it's only on lodging, food and beverages in the city of Blackhawk. And they depend on the gambling industry to support that sales tax. It's again intended for educational purposes only, no admin salaries, building materials or vehicles. A couple of years ago, they extended that coverage to the entire county of Gilpin County. And then they also have built in to their IG some automatic reasons why that tax would be terminated. Okay, let's go to the next one. And this is the third city that I would like to highlight. Steamboat Springs. They have a half cent sales tax and I had to read that four or five times to understand what that meant. That means on a $10 purchase, they collect five cents. That's much less than our 1.09 or Blackhawk's 1.5 and it's actually less than the .3 in Aspen. But again, they use a third-party nonprofit to collect that tax and then redistribute it back to the city of Steamboat Springs and now the entire county. I think that's pronounced Root or Route. I don't know. Kelly, you're a Coloradan. I'm not sure. But again, it's a board, now 22 members, that it was originally 11. They served three-year terms. But they are a recognized IRS-recognized nonprofit. So it's a third party in the middle of this city and school district financial arrangement. Okay. Next slide. So now, I'd like to quickly go over this and actually I may turn this over to our attorney because these are from some some data that he provided to us. There are, there are laws that give us the authority as the city council and the city of Woodland Park to address, or address sales and use taxes within our city limits. The bottom line is this body cannot increase a tax. That's, that's just not possible under taper in the state of Colorado. However, we do have the authority to eliminate or decrease an existing tax. If we wanted to change tax, how the tax may be used, we can return to the voters for a vote. But in that last bullet, understand that this body can end a tax that exists or a mill levy within the city limits. Next slide. These are the, these are the boilerplate options. I mean, we, we could say at this point in time, we could continue the status quo. And the current IGA, which has been signed by President Bates and by Mayor LaBarre, we could repeal the tax or we can reduce the tax rate. Next option, slide. And these are the kinds of options that we can refer to the Woodland Park voters. Jeff, can you talk to these? I mean, there, I know it's not all-inclusive, but it covers most of the options that we could consider tonight and refer for future action. So Jeff, are you prepared to talk to those?
Sure.
Thanks.
Well, the first, the first couple are the ones that you can do yourselves without referring it to the voters, but you may also refer that choice to the voters. The rest, the remainder have to do with the tax proceeds and changing in various ways, the purposes to which the money is put. And as you mentioned a moment ago, the voters earmarked the tax when they originally approved the measure in 2016. And so it is the voters that would have to change that if you want to do it. And these are some various ways to do that.
And then one option that I did not list on any of these slides is, as I mentioned before, the city council in 2016 passed two ordinances. One was the ordinance to put the ballot question out there to the voters. The voters approved the tax on that ballot question. The second ordinance established the the legality of that tax. That is an ordinance that we could also review and modify without going back to the voters. And as you all know, we do have another ordinance that we considered, I think in March and continued. It was not tabled, but continued, and that was to just do an out-and-out elimination of the tax effective in January of 2025. That ordinance is still out there. Is it an appropriate ordinance to move forward? That's, that's up to all of us to decide. We won't vote on it tonight, but it's, it's up for all of us to decide. Or is it possible that we can take that 2016 ordinance and modify it? That maybe comes up with a hybrid similar to Aspen or similar to Steamboat Springs in that we have a third party that collects that tax and then redistributes it based on invoices from the school district. Kelly, that's all I have. That's a lot of information for one night, but I hope it's factual, but hopefully it's not causing any of us to lean one way or the other, just gives us all the background.
Well, I thought it was important. Thank you, Carol, for not only the public, but for the council. Because a lot of this council is new and we're, we're really engaged in that at that time. So I think it's helpful for everyone to have that understanding of that, those events and how they transpired and how we got to where we are. So one of the things that I just asked Suzanne to send the council, a PowerPoint from, I believe it's 2020. And it is, it is the presentation that Brian Gustafson, the previous finance director and many other hats that he wore, provided to the community and to the council. And I just wanted you to see that because I think it came from a time when, before there was a lapse due to the pandemic completely, that's, we had a lapse of a lot of things during the pandemic, including life. And it, it kind of gives us an idea of what was acceptable at that time to the council and to the community as far as reporting on the uses of those sales tax funds. So I gave that to the council and, and I I'll give you a chance to look at it, but I, I just have to say that it looks familiar to what we saw at our last meeting. It has a, it, it looks a little different because it goes on to show some pictures of some programs and some examples of what the spending was for. And really kind of, and they took this on a roadshow, as Carol said, to different organizations and groups in the community. So it wasn't just a report made to the city council, but it was a report made to the community on the use of those funds. And so with that, I'm going to ask the council to begin discussion about what are the expectations are as far as what we expected the school district to bring before us. Understanding that the IGA and the question really describe our authority as a city council. And our authority lies with the sales tax. Our authority does not lie with policy of the school district. It does not lie with curriculum of the school district. It rely, it, it only lies with the spending and the use of the tax dollars. So with that, thoughts and discussion, if you, Terry.
I just wanted to start the evening out by apologizing for, well, not, I don't apologize for my questions in the last council meeting, but I do apologize for the, I let my emotions get the best of me. And so I think my questions came out really harshly. And I just wanted to apologize for that and, and I, I hope you don't see that from me again. I'm going to try to keep a lid on it, but I wanted, I did want to say that. And I also had no intention whatsoever of accusing anyone of fraud. I was simply trying to explain to the superintendent that I knew the difference between a forensic audit and the CDE audit. So again, my apologies and I'll do better.
Thank you, Terry. Should I start or does someone else want to start? Well, I, I have to say that what we were presented is very much like what was presented to previous councils on an annual basis. The content of that, we rely upon the school district to present fairly and honestly and upfront what those tax dollars were used for. I don't know that, I mean, this would be open to debate. I'm not sure that we really have the authority to impose an audit upon them. I, if we did that, we would have to be expected to certainly pay for that. To impose an audit upon another entity, I, I just, to ask them to pay for it seems inappropriate. I am of the opinion, and I said this the last time, that if the people that voted this sales tax into existence and to provide that funding to the school district feel strongly enough about revoking that, changing it, reducing it, sunsetting it, that they certainly have the right to do that. And it seems like that that because they voted for the sales tax, it seems like that that responsibility lies with the people. Although we do have the authority to do that as a council. I also would like to see a catch-up. I'd like to see previous years since the 2020 report how those funds were used in 21, 22. And that, I know it's a fiscal year, but I just think that maybe a catch-up on how those funds were used would be useful information as well and would be interesting to the public. So there's a conversation starter. Smitty, if you don't mind me calling you that.
Everybody else does. For me, when it comes to any type of budget, okay, and I've done budgets since I was, believe it or not, 13 and a half years old. And there's always been line itemizations for every single penny that it was spent or to be used. And that's what I'm getting input from our community is they want line itemization. What is so hard about that? That's what I expect and that's what our community expects is line itemization.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Sue. Terry.
Do you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, the presiding officer gave you the floor.
So if, if a forensic audit was done, it, could that be paid for out of the sales tax revenues? Um, that's question number one. Is it, is it reasonable? Is it reasonable to uh, have a separate account basically? So that the sales tax money is not intermixed with all the federal and state funding? So that there can be a ledger exactly for the sales tax line items, what, what it was spent for? So that the funds aren't intermixed and it's easier to see.
Thank you. George.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to start off, I think, with the idea that we not eliminate the sales tax. I know that there's a, there's some calling for that, but I, I do believe that would be detrimental to this city. So I, I just want to throw that out there. Additionally, I love the idea of treating it like a grant. Where um, there is a separate bucket. Uh, it's held accountable. And it's reviewed.
Yeah, I'd like to uh, kind of piggyback, I, I, with what Smitty and with Georgia both said. All this community is really asking for, in what I'm hearing anyway, is that we get a line item budget. If, if you're funneling it to all of the staff, great. I mean, if it's going to merit, fine, but give us where it's actually going, line item by line item. That's what I keep hearing. Um, and I don't think, I mean, our budget's done that way. We have a four-ten fund, we have a grants fund. We put all the money in there and then it comes out in expenditures and you get to see where it all goes. And so that's, and I also agree, I don't want to sunset the tax right now. I think we need it. I think the teachers need it. I think the kids need it. I'm torn on, on which way to go, but that's where I'm at right now.
Carol, could you talk, I'm sorry, Mayor, yeah. Um, can you talk about this intermediary party a little bit more? This is new to me. I haven't heard that.
Yeah, same to me as well.
Um, yeah, I, I haven't done a whole lot of research on it, but it, it probably was instituted in the city of Aspen and in um, um, Steamboat as a means of an, a third party that had no connection to the use of the tax or the, even the collection of the tax, that they were simply approving expenditures. Uh, in both cities, those are uh, established nonprofits. They've got nonprofit status. They have um, elected board members that uh, are term limited. Um, I had, I briefly talked with Jeff about this this morning, that it might even be to our advantage to ha, invite um, some, one or two of those board members to join us by Zoom or even come to, I know it's a long drive for them, but come and tell us how that works. Um, it's, it's a novel approach. Um, my, my problem last week with the presentation is, number one, I'm so appreciative of the fact that the dialogue began again with the school district. We, we absolutely had to make that happen. Um, and the presentation, as some have pointed out, it was no more, no less than the presentations we, we received as a council and as a community prior to two thousand and twenty. But I'm not an accountant, but I could look at some of the items that um, the president and the superintendent briefed. And I went, uh, for instance, the capturing kids' hearts program. If I went back and looked at the budget from twenty-three, twenty-four for the school dri, district, it looks like, and I may, may be incorrect, I've been working on this all afternoon and asking people who were more familiar with the budget than myself, that, that program was actually paid through by escrow funds. Escrow funds, I guess, are the gift that just keeps on giving. I don't know for sure. Um, that, that, you know, raised some red flags. And then the discussion of se, security, which is very, very important to me. Um, I was glad to see that a portion of that was um, identified for safety and a portion of the sales tax revenue was identified for safety and security. But there was a statement that was made that I think is incorrect, and Chief Dyser can correct me if that's changed, is that the, the city never refused as uh, the school district, a school resource officer. In fact, the city offered up three resource officers at the city's expense, but they were turned down by the school district and therefore they are now having to pay for outside security. Um, if I'm incorrect, I'm incorrect, but I don't believe that I am. My point is this, um, general fund dollars are fungible. Um, the president and the superintendent could have told us exactly what we wanted to hear. But the meat of this is, can you go back and show me line item by line item, how you spent that? I don't want to end the tax either. There was a definite need during an economic crisis that I don't think will ever end for the school district, for the city, for the state. So how do we come to agreement on how to make sure those tax, tax dollars are being spent the way voters believe they would be spent? Is that giving this whole issue back up to the citizens? Possibly, I just don't think that's necessary. I think it's probably more appropriate to modify the exist, existing ordinance and include some guardrails in it and possibly explore an option like a third party that would collect that, those tax do, tax dollars outside of uh, outside of the city.
Just for clarification though, I think Jeff's, Jeffrey indicated that a modification would require, would, would need to be referred back to the citizens.
Hmm, not necessarily.
Well, a modification, uh, a, a narrowing or a change in the purposes to which the funds could be put. Uh, this discussion is about an accounting
Okay.
under the existing regime. And those sorts of things are addressed in the IGA.
Okay.
And the IGA can be reopened and these things could be added to it as a condition.
Understanding that if we establish this third party uh, as a nonprofit or uh, some other entity, they would have an administrative overhead as well, um, and that would have to come out of the tax. This is not, you know, just a bunch of volunteers like us who work for nothing. This would be hopefully a professional group that would collect the do, dollars and then redistribute them through some means back to the school district. I, again, just an, a, a suggestion. Um, Catherine?
So if we, I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with going with a third party, but is there something, is there some reason we wouldn't just do like we do in our budget? Make them create a grants fund that
An escrow account.
Escrow account where all the money goes into and then they have to submit bills to get the money out? I mean, that would be a little bit less expensive.
Recommendation that comes out of this work session is that we ask our, 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 our Uber finance officer, our city manager
Yeah.
to, to give us some options on how that could be done. And it, it goes back to, you know, I just, I just called into question two items on that briefing and I may be totally out of line and that there's, you know, some innocent explanation, but I don't know for sure. And I've lost a level of trust. Um, and I want to be able to give us all an opportunity to make this right. Um, and maybe it is a different financial arrangement.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry. Jeff, let's let Jeff go because he has it. Thank you.
You know, um, I actually, either, either we do it as a, as a grant setup or we look at introducing a third party. I, 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 I think the biggest challenge for me in all of this has been, we're, we're, we've been kind of unintentionally put in the position of police to a certain extent. And I don't want to speak for anyone else up here, but neither of, none, at least myself personally, I, I don't have the desire or the time or the willingness to keep having this discussion on a fairly regular basis. And I think, you know, I, and that's why I either like doing either as a grant or as a, a third party nonprofit kind of sitting in the middle is our role from a council perspective essentially gets us out of really being involved in this at the level that we're involved in, you know, I, um, I, based, looking at previous uh, years reporting and going back and looking at some of these council sessions and stuff. It certainly didn't used to be the way that it is today. Um, and, and, and I really think for everyone's blood pressure, and I do mean everyone's blood pressure, trying to figure out how we kind of take some of the emotion out of this and try to look at this more pragmatically is, is important. But I don't think we as a body really want to get into the deep minutia of, of school finance. Um, now, if any of you guys disagree by all means, but I certainly, we should try to be, you know, I'll be frankly honest with everyone, you know, I, I campaigned very heavily on getting rid of this tax. You know, I, I think, you know, having spoken with many of you several times and spoken with several of you out there in the crowd, you know, and, and George, you know, uh, you, our conversation the other day, um, I don't think we gain anything by just pulling it. I, um, you know, like I said, there was a time where I was pretty adamant that that was the only discussion I was willing to have. Um, that's no longer the case. And it's not necessarily because I feel like we've gotten the information we want or that everything's better, but the consequences are so much worse. And, and I think that from that perspective, I want to throw my hat in the ring on, let's just table the discussion on getting rid of it entirely. And let's try to move towards a discussion of how do we make it better? How do we get some of this accountability in there? And, and how do we, you know, keep, keep this, this moving forward rather than constantly having to bring this up and continue to revisit history? So um, I'm all in favor of the either third party nonprofit. I, I think it's a great idea to see if we can get someone from Aspen or, or Steamboat Springs or, or wherever to, to come and, and explain to us how they got to this, what they did and how they had to do that. Or even, like I said, the, the grant thing, I'm, I'm fine with. But uh, I, I, I don't think, at least from my perspective, there's, th- there's any useful discussion in, in just carte blanche cancelling it and moving on, so.
Thank you, Jeff. Terry.
In the idea of a third party, who picks the third party? You know, I, I don't know. I, I, my knowledge of how those two cities do it is pretty supervision, superficial. They, I mean, they have great websites with lots of pretty pictures and colors and that appeals to me. But um, I, again, I think it would be behoove us to reach out and find out how they do it. I mean, but that is an option, a third party. Another option is, is, is Catherine has suggested setting it up in a structure of a grant, but it would still require the school district to acc, you know, account for expenditures in a much more detailed manner. Um, uh, when we talk about tabling the ordinance that's up for discussion in July, um, tabling is certainly an option. If you table an ordinance and it doesn't come back up, it, it dies after one year. Am I correct?
Yeah.
It would still be out there in the cloud, uh, but it would, it, unless two of us on the council asked it for it to come back up or for the mayor to ask for it to come back up, it would die on the vine. Um, but we, we, we can't let this, with this much participation and interest in, in this issue, we, we can't just kick the can down the road. We do need to address um, a, a, a very generous gift to the community from the voters and make sure that it is being spent the way they believed it would be spent. And as Jeff said, we can't be the watchdogs, nor should we.
Can I respond to that, please?
Please.
So Jeff, Jeff, does that mean that the IGA would go away if this is set up as a grant? So there's still an IGA?
It's just an accounting. It's just a, a grants or grants, accounting are imposed by the grantee. Um, let's say transportation grants that we receive in the federal government, they, they come with a set of criteria that you must follow or you lose the funds.
Uh, do we, so, so the IGA is still in place or it gets changed in order to?
It would get changed.
But to be clear, you know, that's a collaborative process though. So, you know, we can't just dictate, you know, we're, we're gonna make X, Y, Z changes, sign here.
Yeah, that's right. That's the difference between doing it in the IGA where it's a meeting of the minds and we agree to it as a matter of contract. Uh, the same thing could be accomplished by referring the matter to the voters and then the voters decide for us.
Here we go back to Carol. Carol, where you thought we could maybe modify the original ordinance to add that without going to the voters or not?
I, I don't know. I would again refer that back to our attorney to just, it, to, you know, that might be a, a, another means of addressing it. But uh, that ordinance really just puts the tax in place.
Right. And again, it's the, I'd have the same answer on that as I did earlier in terms of, as long as you don't screw around with the purposes that the voters approve. Um, the, things like accounting can be done through intergovernmental agreement. But as soon as you want to start limiting the purposes to which the money could be put beyond the current arrangement, that's where you have to go back to the voters.
Okay, I think I get that.
It's, it's really about the purpose of the uses of the funds.
Right. So that's what I was just, if we, so if we don't put it in the IGA, but we add it to the ordinance, we're not telling them how to repurpose the money. We're just asking for an accounting of it. So would we have to do that in the IGA or could we just get the ordinance?
I think the IGA is the appropriate place.
Okay, that's why I'm just, I'm just
Operation.
My, my brain has to get there.
Sure. And the reason that I say that is because it's operations. It's an operation.
Okay.
And, and it's um, it's very common with grants that you account for them separately with their own revenues and their own expenses and their own fund balance. It may be easier for us to do that because we aren't under a prescribed chart of accounts and accounting as the Division of Education promulgates and imposes upon all schools and all school districts. But I'm sure that there is a way to do that because they also receive grants that require.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I, and, and from what I recall in um, uh, Steamboat Springs, their IGA did cover, they have a very lengthy IGA on their website that does cover the accounting process. Um, and the reasons that um, money could be frozen. We don't have that ability here. We can't say we're ticked off at somebody and we're gonna hold the money back. We can't do that. In the IGA that I saw with um, with Steamboat is they, they did write that into part of the process. And it looked like a pretty much of a boiler point or boilerplate legal agreement. But it, a, as we finish this discussion tonight, I mean, that would be my request of staff is to, to find out how those, that city and Aspen have done theirs. Black Hawk is another animal altogether. There's, but it, 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 it might be worth exploring, but um, theirs is really dependent on people who like the slots.
It's focused on that gaming industry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's versus the rest of the, the revenue streams that they have.
Plus private financial institutions hold funds and manage them for purposes all the time. So there's, I, I, those are options as well.
So I think Jeff, I mean, Terry and Smitty, we haven't really heard from you. Um, I'm interested to know your position on the ordinance that's out there. Ordinance uh, fourteen seventy-one. We've had everyone else, well, and I, I feel like I, I do not feel like we should, are at a position where we have justification to repeal tax at this point. So I'll put that on the record because I also have not weighed in. And I don't want to push you if you don't found a position yet.
I said during the last, during our city council meeting, that's the last thing that I want to do.
Okay.
I believe us very strongly in public education. I just know that there, the, the community is split and, and so some real transparency would go a long way to put all this stuff to bed. And, and I'd really like to put it to bed. I would too.
Well, you know, for me, decision hasn't fully been laid out there for me. But I'm always for the kids. I'm always for the teachers. Okay? Did that for decades, still do. My only question is, is the accountability of it? That's the whole thing. And even if we went to say a third entity to maintain the grant or whatever it is, you know, are they the people that will say, hey, you're not doing what you're supposed to, so we're revoking this? Or do they say, hey, you know, city of Woodland Park, you know, they're not doing this? You know, where does it go from there? How do we keep them maintaining transparency with this tax?
It, it, it could be in the form of an appeal to the city council, similar, similar to what we do with the Board of Um, Appeals or Board, Board of Adjustment. If, you know, that entity doesn't approve an expenditure, then the school district could appeal it to us. Doesn't approve an expenditure, then the school district could appeal it to us. I mean, that's that's a solution. It's not the only one.
And then we basically would would either say that it is a legitimate expenditure or it's not. And if it's not, then they have to put the money back basically in the account. Would be how that I it's similar to the Board of Adjustment, which grants a variance or it doesn't grant a variance.
I think at the end of the day, no matter how we do it, we we need to be thinking in word and verbiage from. Uh, being agnostic on, you know, who's on council and who's on the school board. That way, you know, I think one of the. The mistakes, and I hate calling it a mistake because no one has a crystal ball or had one, you know, in two thousand sixteen, but. The the ordinance as it's written today is. Not written from a perspective of it doesn't matter who's running council or who's on the school board. It's it's written very. Generically and, you know, I I think, you know, that's an important thing that we should all keep in mind as we move forward in this process is. How whatever we do with verbiage, we try to take a step back and do it from a perspective of. It no longer matters who's running the school board or who's running city council. Um, but the language is. Adjust not adjustable, but the language has been adjusted to account for that. Um, so just that's just another point I wanted to make.
Yeah, and you know, with that, you know. Whatever gets changed or doesn't get changed from here on out, I really would. Hope that any questions are very specified. And very direct of what is, what isn't, what shall be, what shouldn't be, more very direct. Because, you know, yeah, let's not leave any loopholes.
Or do the best we can.
At the best we can.
It's not a perfect world.
Well, it's not.
Someone with enough time and effort, it's always a human built it, another human cannot build the kind of thing. So but but you know, I I I agree, you know, let's. Let's try to look at things, you know, from a from from a perspective of, you know, consistency and. And, you know, accountability is not just necessarily about the the current situation that that we find ourselves in. Um, as stewards of tax money, accountability should always be. The number one thing that that drives how we make our decisions. Um, it's, you know, it's. It's unfortunate that that word keeps coming up the way that it does, but. You know, I actually think we as a group have an opportunity to. Um, improve this situation for the entire community as long as. You know, we kinda can take that step back. And like I said earlier, you know, I. I've evolved on this quite significantly, um especially in the last couple of weeks and. And I I wanna thank again everyone for taking the time to to sit down with me and also members of the community for doing that as well. Um. It's been education.
Knowledge is powerful, isn't it? Suzanne, can I point if I just wanna clarify something. This whole time that we've been talking about July. And all the the school district continues to receive those funds every month. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they've been they've been still getting. That's what I thought.
Yeah, we don't, we do not.
I just didn't know if there was a pause button that had gotten pushed.
We do not have so, no.
No, there there was not.
Hello, Aaron.
It's God.
Aaron, do you have anything that you would like to share with regards to these? The idea about the accounting for it as similar to a grant. Um, you have more recent experience than I do, and um if you could just comment on your thoughts on that. If you don't mind, I'd hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, absolutely. So I would have several questions as to the process itself in terms of. Let let's say that there was a new I G A negotiated and the school district would have to submit to the city. The the way the process works right now, the city collects all the sales tax. We do a review of it and then we submit each month. It takes us about thirty days. Once the month closes to then submit it to the school district. And we submit them the full one point oh nine percent. If we went to this other method where the school district had to submit to us an invoice with backup. For us to reimburse it, I would have questions as to what happens if they don't submit enough for the whole one point oh nine percent. Um, but in terms of processing the reimbursements, I mean, that's something we could we could easily do. We could hold the money in a separate account and then. They could submit invoices and we would reimburse. I mean, that that part itself is not not that difficult for us.
So the administr- sorry, I'm just gonna, so so the administration of it, you're fine with. It would just be. The exceptions or the the, you know, what happens with if what if they're over? What if they ask for more than?
Correct, yeah. So that that's that's what we'd have to understand is how does that.
But but you're not concerned about your uh your staffing availability to 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 add that burden on to them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I I don't think that would be that much additional work.
So. This is not at all what I had in mind, just to share with you because I don't think that that's a reasonable ask and I don't think that is too labor intensive. And I I don't think that that's appropriate. I think that the the accounting on the school district's end. Is accounted for as if it were a grant, meaning that they account for the revenues coming from that grant. And the associated expenditures coming from that grant. We do that in a fund. For the city, we have a grants fund, we have the lodging tax fund so that we have tr- full transparency and that we can any day of the week. Pull a report off the accounting system and show the public how those funds are being spent. And and that's. Absolutely. Anything is subject to cora. So that's my, that's what I envisioned the grant idea looking like.
So you're not really like the gatekeeping per se. Okay, no, and that's that's fair. And I I understand where you come from.
No, no, no.
Absolutely.
I just that's that's completely beyond.
Okay.
I I would like, though, I mean, and this is really in. What we had intended to wrap this discussion up with is that we also explore that third party option. It it may not be appropriate for this community, but it is working into other communities uh 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 for many years.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think you end up with, if it's an appointed, I think you end up with equal seats that the board can have, school board can appoint. And equal seats that we could appoint. But how that mechanism actually works and the time period, there's. I I I think I think what's, yeah, I I agree. I I think gaining more information on how that could work and. And as much as I hate using this phrase, is the juice worth the squeeze on something like that, um, uh, you know, cuz. It the 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 more complicated we'd make it and you probably can make an argument that a third party who we've never used or had before. Ejected into something like this could could add a layer of complexity that. Maybe we're not necessarily looking for, but I can tell you I I I had never heard of that until today. Um, so I'm very eager and interested in gathering more data around that to see if that's an appropriate fit for our community.
And keep in mind, it's also an additional expense.
Right.
And use of funds.
Nothing's free.
And it I don't think it would be inexpensive either.
No, well, as I mentioned before, um. Steamboat has a two percent pass through. Their their board that they've established uh to. As a third party, as a two percent pass through. Uh, in our most recent version of the I G A, we're asking for a one percent pass through. And then we also know that the county charges us three percent. So I mean, it, yeah, it would, the pass through would come from the collected revenue.
That certainly could be an issue.
Just to be clear too, when we say that the county charges us, the county ch- collects. Our property, the city's property taxes on our behalf and remits that to us on a monthly basis. And so they charge us to do that, a three percent fee of the taxes collected, just to be clear and and everyone understands that. Correct.
I think one of the one of the sort of low hanging fruit options that you many of you have been mentioning. Is the requirement that the funds be deposited in a special fund or account. And I I've heard two versions, either the fund, the account is maintained at the district or we maintain the account. But it could be maintained at the district and have a fairly robust accounting regime. Um, applied to it in a periodic account. That would require an amendment to the I G A.
As well.
Talked about, but you but you wouldn't have to go to the voters, so. Makes it a little simpler, yes.
So if we had the, I mean, so the district right now gets, in theory, the district gets grants from the state. And they should they can get and they have to give a detailed report back to the state. What they get with those grants. So they already have the system in place. They just have to add a separate grants fund. For our sales tax and then they have to report it back to. The citizens and or us or whoever. Is that is that?
You could have a a reporting regime similar to that that applies to grants, whether you have grants or not. You could use that type of accounting system.
So, uh, Jeff, question, say that happens, okay? Who's gonna monitor that county pre uh? Special people.
Well, first of all, it'd be audited by their annual audit. That's required. And and just hold on a minute. And it's always subject to cora. So anyone in the public could see it at any time they want.
Right.
And we can also see it. So we can see if it's accounted for separately because I can tell you. That more than likely it is intermingled within expenses and revenues. I'm sure there's a line item for the revenue. That's how they attract it. But expenses are probably commingled with other sources of funds because the expense is larger than what we're giving them. Particularly for salaries and benefits. So it would provide for a pure revenue. Of source of funds and use of funds in one place that's not intermingled with general fund funds.
So even the lamest person could understand it.
Absolutely. Absolute. So and it it may be a shared expense with other funds that part of the expense is charged to the grant fund and part or. I call it the grant fund just for ease of conversation. And part of it is charged to the general fund for. Other revenue sources to pay because the expenses. Say it's three hundred thousand dollars and a hundred of it is charged to the sa- the sales tax fund and the other is charged to the general fund. It's so it's just it's just a matter of distributing expenses that happens all the time.
It's similar to how we do our budget because we have. We have grants funds, we have.
Yes.
The four ten, the five ten, and all sorts of things where it's it's divvied up. So a percentage comes out of one fund and comes out of the other fund to make the whole.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, my concern, you know, with that was, you know. Say Jeff or, you know, Aaron or somebody walks in and says, let me see this. You know. Who's gonna make sure that what he's seeing is correct?
Well, it's not a perfect world and, yeah. It has to come in.
But it it's it's.
It's an honest and and it's an integrity.
Better a a more accurate, I won't say better, it's a more accurate approach than what we're asking the school district to do now. You know, they they came in and they briefed what they thought was, you know, what we wanted to hear. I you can't fault that. But it was not accurate. Uh, and and nor what I'd expected it to be, but in. This one option that we're discussing, we we could work to to correct that. But I I still would also like to look at a third party as well, knowing that that would probably be a more expensive approach, but.
I was just gonna say, I think the third party widely subject to the same kind of dilemma that you're mentioning, Councilmember Jones. How do you know? Let's say we have a bank managing these funds.
You guys sat in the wrong chairs. We're alphabetical now that Carol's joined us. But if you like where you're sitting, you may stay there. Whatever you like.
Still Terry. You're still Terry.
Yeah, that's my my whole thing is regardless of how we go. How are we gonna make sure to the best of the abilities of appropriate? That things will be the the way they're supposed to be.
Well, I think Smitty, that's the nice thing about the third party. If it's equal elected appointed people that are managing the third party. Um, you know, let's say, I think, what was it? Steamboat, Carol has twenty two?
And they're on three year terms.
Yeah, so which is a lot. I don't think we need twenty two, but you know, if we had ten, you know, five appointed by us and five appointed by the board. Be really hard for either side to pull the wool over, so to speak, um, because there'd be a built in check and balance there.
That's that that uh supposes that there's a division that, you know. Unity members with the expertise and the willingness to work for nothing.
That's.
You know, it, as I said. Um, unless there's an intent to deceive. There's, you know, I I remember years ago and I it's been quite a few years ago, there was an embezzlement in the school district.
Yeah.
And that is an intent to deceive. And. People are not perfect and and that opportunity is still out there. Um, not to say that that's what's happening, but there's no guarantees in this world for anything. We can only do the best we can and ask for, um, find a way between the two of us to. Satisfy that need for information. And I think maybe we've come up with some ideas that we can further explore. And um try to resolve this and move forward.
Yeah.
And help the community come back together because this divisiveness does does not accomplish anything. And I think we need to find. A way to um find something that would be satisfactory and something we can rely on and move move ahead.
Well, I'll say this from the people that I've heard from. That's great, but show me the lines.
Yeah, that's what this would do. Okay.
Yes.
But do we do we need consensus for Carol to go try to see if we can get somebody from Aspen or Steamboat to come talk to us or?
That would be staff.
Um, let let's wait until the end of the discussion. I think we're still gonna open it up for public uh public comment, but um I would make that charge to the staff. I'm, yeah, the staff should take. I I'm not particularly charming, so. All right, council, anything else? Should we hear from the public? I know they they.
You actually heard from me tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. All right, we will now, we're even a little early of what was planned. Um, Suzanne will help us by calling you and she will also ask for someone to be on deck, kinda like baseball. Um, we'll have a a speaker and we'll have someone on deck so that we're prepared to someone take the microphone and continue to. Share public comment with us.
Thank you, Erin.
All right, thank you, Suzanne.
Mayor, I just would like to um explain to council and the public the order that I'm calling these in. And some of um these public comments were submitted to me last week. So I go in the order of when I receive them and most of the ones I receive online, they go first because those are the ones that I get first. And so our first speaker is Jerry Penland with Tricia's Dinner on Deck.
Thanks, Suzanne.
I assume that an ordinance will or something will come before city council. Um, after this meeting and in the next couple of weeks or the next meeting, so I prefer to hold my comments until then. To put them on the official record with the city council meeting.
Thank you. That'd be great. Appreciate that. We'll we'll let you know when that comes forward. It'll be public noise. Jerry, you're dropping cards.
Okay, and now we have Tricia's Dinner and we have Lance McMahon on deck.
Tricia Stinner, resident of City Par- uh, Woodland Park, um. Thank you, Mayor Case, for allowing public comment during this work session.
You're welcome.
Um, I agree with Jerry Penland. I think I'm going to wait until the official public hearing to issue and weigh my opinions on this. And I think that um. The one thing I am not hearing tonight that I would like to hear at the public hearing. Because we're not going back and forth tonight and I respect that and I appreciate that. I don't think anybody's talking about the real numbers here. How many students have we lost this year? How many students compared to two previous years? The loss of students has accelerated. I do not like the idea of rewarding for performance. Does that mean yank the tax? Maybe not. Does it mean take a look at our schools becoming segregated? Are our schools being managed well? And if they are wonderful, everybody has a down year. But if there's something more intrinsic going on, I would like to see this tax revoked, rescinded, terminated. And allow the school district and their board members to approach the voters. And find out, let them find out whether or not the voters will continue to support them. But I think there are so many flaws in the existing ordinance. It needs to be retired. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lance McMahon and we have Scott Tally on deck.
Good evening, members of the Woodland Park.
Good evening, members of the Woodland Park City Council. My name is Lance McMahon. A concerned taxpayer and voter in our community. I'm a CPA licensed in Colorado and Texas and have extensive knowledge of governmental auditing and accounting with experience auditing the two largest school districts in South Texas, many other smaller districts, city and county governments, water utility districts and so on. Also, my entire family is involved in public education at various levels. I stand before you here today to discuss the pressing issue of transparency within the Woodland Park School District, particularly concerning the handling of document requests and the disclosure of financial transactions. Over the past months, I along with other community members have sought clarity and how tax dollars are being utilized within the school district. Unfortunately, our efforts have been met with resistance and a lack of forthcoming information. The school district board refuses to answer questions delivered by mail. And they refuse to answer questions at board meetings. Additionally, requests for documents that should be readily available to the public have been delayed or inadequately addressed, casting a shadow on the board's commitment to transparency. As the district has been lax in communication, we have tried to collect financial information ourselves to no avail. The city sales tax dedicated to our schools is a significant investment by the residents of Woodland Park. Sales tax revenues are transmitted to the school district in the hopes that they will be used to enhance the educational environment for the district's children. However, without clear and accessible financial reporting, we are left questioning the stewardship of taxpayer dollars. Transparency is not just a legal requirement. It is the foundation of trust between the school district and the community it serves. When that trust is eroded, it is not just the relationship that suffers, but the quality of education and the future of our children. A good model of transparency is the online monthly financial reporting by the city of Woodland Park to its constituents. Everything someone would need to know is there transparent and easy to understand. Monthly expense reports detailed, monthly revenue reports detailed, and a myriad of other reports are on your website accessible and understandable. As you deliberate on the continuation or withdrawal of the school district city sales tax, I urge you to consider the importance of accountability and open governance. The decision you make will send a clear message about the values that we uphold as a community and the standards we expect from those who manage our resources. By ensuring that the school district provides credible and timely responses to financial documents and open records requests, the public will be able to make informed decisions and hold district leaders accountable. Only then can we confidently support the funding that shapes the education of our youngest residents. Thank you for your time and attention to this critical matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Scott Tally and Norm Mitchell is on deck.
Scott, would you just tell us what city you reside in, please?
Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I would like to first start off by saying, uh, CPA keyboard warriors out there on social media are not who we should be taking guidance from. We should be taking guidance from from people in our district right now that know the ins and outs of Colorado.
Can we, can we please not do that? It it just really causes disorder and let the folks have a quiet time to speak. Thank you.
Eric, can you start this time over? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I believe Woodland Park had it right in twenty sixteen. Um, we're taking a step backwards now. Uh, I I grew up here. I graduated from Woodland Park. I'm a panther. My two children are bears. So we have a split family, but I love this place. We came back here after twenty five years being gone. I served in the military. We raised our family up in northern Colorado where it's turning into a complete disaster right now. We moved back after twenty five years because of the school district, not despite it. That's why we're here. So we moved into a house that was a vacation home that now they were here two months a year. Now we're here twelve months a year spending our hard earned dollars in this town. So that's where I first want to start. Um, northern Colorado, like I said, um, I grew my business there. I left my clients up there. I now travel for them so my kids can be in this school district. So I made that sacrifice for my family because of what's going on here and it's unique. It's not happening across many other places in this state and this country. It's unique and people are gonna flock here. If we stop separating this community, um, there's so many other places that if you have a different belief system, there are there are everywhere else in this in this country, in this state that you can go to. I meant I heard Aspen and Steamboat and Route County. Fine, like we have a place there. We decided not to move there because of the school districts, okay? I also want to just, I think, get back to the fundamental thought of if we keep asking for accountability. The only reason why you'd be asking for accountability is if you still think that there is some misappropriation of funds. A- a- and I don't believe that there is. If you look at school districts across our country and our state right now, Puders Tool District, if you look at the Colorado and every single day their headline is schools closing, raising taxes, they're talking about closing five schools up there right now. And what did they do to the superintendent? They throw him through the mud and now are accusing him of 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 sexual stuff with a female staff member. Okay, that's what's happening across this country and this state, and it's ridiculous. So the political weaponization that I'm seeing from a board that I think differs from our school board is ridiculous. Instead of like thinking that we just got to scrape all the little bits out of the pot, we have one little pot to 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 spread out over all these different entities that we have as a city. How about we grow the pot? Let's get a bigger bucket here. And we can do that by raising revenue in our city so no one is 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 scraping over these dollars. Let's put in some flower boxes on Main Street so that if a kid trips on the sidewalk, he's not getting hit by a car going fifty. Let's bring a weekend rodeo circuit back that we can have every single weekend in the summer. We have a rodeo rodeo session and people will flock to our town and spend their dollars here and make it a destination city instead of a pass through city. Those are the things that I think city council should be working towards, not weaponizing our school tax dollars.
Thank you. Welcome.
So we have um, Norm Mitchell and Mary Sikowski on deck.
Thanks.
Welcome. Could you please share your city of residence with us?
I'm sorry?
Your, share your city of residence, please.
Yes, I'm I'm a Woodland Park resident. My name is Norm Mitchell.
Thank you.
I've got four children who attend school here. Uh, just a couple of thoughts. Um, I keep hearing concerns about line items. Um, and admittedly, I was not here for the last meeting, so I'm not sure what all was discussed, but a couple of things to think about. Every year, the school district produces a financial report. It's about ninety pages long. To me, it's not clear why that is not sufficient information for the town, the city council. Um, but in the initial initiative that established this tax, the categories or the the initial line items were pretty broad, things like facilities improvement. Uh, it it's, uh, it doesn't seem reasonable to me necessarily to acquire uh, the school district that maybe each maintenance expenditure for each school uh, be listed individually uh, a- as a line item. It seems pretty unreasonable and uh, just overly onerous to them. The voters of this city eight years ago chose this one percent consumption tax uh, as a trade off for a small property tax break. Uh, and it's not obvious to me why the city council is not pushing um, to cut the balance of Woodland Park's four percent sales tax or to cut Woodland Park's fifteen point seven mil levy or the four percent, or it's even the four mil levy for the library. But it appears that that would be because this council controls that revenue, doesn't control the revenue that the school district controls. And if you cut the other revenue, it might make this council look bad. And I I will say that the appearances are that a lot of this is politically motivated and intended to make the school school board look bad. Uh, and I I see a lot of spurious allegations that uh, don't seem to have a lot of evidence behind it. If that appearance is correct, that this is politically motivated, it would make me counsel, uh, question this council's uh, utility, sincerity, and even character, frankly. So my request would be for this council, for the time being, just to leave uh, this school district funding alone. I think the ten or eleven percent uh, revenue cut would be pretty uh, pretty drastic at this time. Uh, and not at all helpful. And I would prefer to see this council focus on things like fixing the roads, uh, maybe fighting to lower our property taxes, which Denver apparently is trying to raise again. So that's where I'd prefer to see this council start. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we have um, Mary Sikowski and Jamison Dion on deck.
Hi, I'm Mary Sikowski. I'm a resident of Woodland Park and most importantly, a mother to a nine year old fourth grader and a sixteen year old high school junior. Um, in additional to the, in addition to the critical reasons you will hear tonight regarding the importance of keeping the sales tax for education in place that was voted in eight years ago, I would like to speak to the problems created by city council that brought us to this place and the unreasonable, unrealistic expectation placed on the school district to provide unusual data or else. Thank you, Mayor Case, for pointing out that the presentation in the last uh, city council meeting was consistent with um, all other presentations in the past regarding the sales tax allocation. It's also consistent with widely used methods of illustration of that data, pie charts. It clearly stated that the entirety of the sales tax funds um, are allocated to uh, very specific categories. It is plainly removed from anything whatsoever to do with administrative costs or legal fees. No matter how it is sliced or presented, it is not going to administrative costs or legal fees. But that's not enough. Let's get real. This really isn't about knowing the exact line items for the expenses in these categories, is it? It's not about having the itemized list of the teacher's salaries that encompasses seventy percent of how the money is spent. It's a witch hunt. It's a group wanting this council to strong arm a power play to corner the Woodland Park School District administration into a made up gotcha. That's not gonna happen. Anyone can see that the expenses in these categories fit squarely within the purview of allocating these funds to those categories within the budget. Just the instructional salaries alone in twenty twenty three for teachers was over seven million dollars. And if every penny from the sales tax revenue was reported strictly to pay teachers, it would only cover half of it. The city council is toying with the future of our children's education with this dangerous power play. We should not be here having this discussion this evening in the context of removing this tax, and I am appreciative of the tone shifting to some alternate uh, methods of accountability. Our school district shouldn't be concerned right now with the programs they may have to cut or offering lower salaries to new teachers this upcoming school year as a result of stripping this revenue from the district. For those that dislike the sales tax and want to see it eliminated eventually, let's discuss that. Let's discuss a sunset eventually. Let's complete the payoff of the C O P. Let's give the state time to follow through on their plans, which were just signed by Governor Proles last week and will take years to fill the gap uh, in the nineteen eighty nine funding levels for the state of Colorado. Let's give the current administration of the Woodland Park School District time to do their job and show the results of a plan they are confident will elevate our district to levels of high performance Woodland Park has never seen. Don't defund our kids. Don't defund our teachers. Don't defund the future of Woodland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Suzanne. So we, um, I'm gonna just make announcement. I want everyone to recognize we did have a consensus on this council this evening. Uh, we can't take a vote that there is no intention of this council to take the sales tax. So thank you for your comments. This council has made it clear that is not our intent. And I would please again ask you to hold your applause. Thank you very much. Very disruptive. Thank you very much.
We have Jamison Dion and next is Rachel Priest.
Thank you, Jamison Dion.
Thank you. My name is Jamison Dion. I'm a resident and taxpayer within the boundaries of the Woodland Park School District. Um, I just want to quickly point out, um, I don't have a CPA, but I was able to find the complete financials for the school district on the website. So if anybody needs help finding that, I'm more than happy to direct you to it. Um, I was disappointed uh, to hear a council member last meeting make slanderous claims. Uh, one council member, and I'll skip this part due to your apology, so I appreciate that. Um, another council member claimed that his eighth grader had received a project where he had to explain why not all slavery is bad. And that this assignment came straight from the American birthright standard. The Woodland Park School District released a statement today on their website, which stated an investigation was conducted concerning the alarming claim that an assignment was given asking students to explain why not all slavery is bad. After interviewing the teacher and reviewing all recorded relevant curriculum and assignments, the district has determined that the claim is false. No assignment was given this year asking students to explain why not all slavery was bad. One of the resources for this unit includes a YouTube video called Summary of Slavery, Slavery Crash Course, U.S. History Number Thirteen. This video gives very different viewpoints about slavery during the early American period, including a viewpoint that some Southerners tried to argue that there are benefits to slavery. The lesson in no way argues that not all slavery is bad, although it explains why some slave owners argued in favor of, in favor of slavery. I'll note that I watched this video and verified that it correctly contextualizes slavery and views of slave owners as selfishly financially justified at the expense of their slavery or slaves misery and violated rights. The council member that made this claim stated that we need to have an honest conversation about academics. Apparently, this requirement for honesty does not extend to him. Apparently, he also considers the employment reputation of his son's teacher as unfortunate collateral damage in his irresponsible statement. He put an educator at risk. This is unacceptable. This council now faces an important decision. Does integrity and honesty matter to this body? This would be a simple matter to verify. Can this council member produce his son's project that asks him to explain why not all slavery is bad? If integrity and honest and honesty matter to this council, an investigation will follow. If the details in the district's public statement are confirmed, that council member needs to resign. Dishonesty has no place on a council that should embody the integrity and honesty that this city deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, I'm gonna ask you one more time. I would appreciate you to hold your applause.
We have Rachel Priest and Mike Demuth is on deck.
Welcome. Could you please give us the town, the city of your residency?
Yes, uh, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Rachel Priest. I'm an educator in the district. I'm a mom to a kindergartner and a first grader. Um, I'm a resident of Woodland Park and of course, I'm a taxpayer. The fact that all of us are here because there's a possibility of our school losing funding based on the decision to potentially revoke the one point zero nine percent sales tax for our school district really saddens me. This tax amounts to three point two million dollars each year, three point two million dollars. To personally reduce a school's, uh, school district's budget by three two million dollars would be detrimental. The tax pays for the C O P over seven hundred thousand dollars and it makes up nine percent of merit merits budget and eleven percent of the remaining school, schools budget after the C O P is paid. This tax was intended for staff compensation, facility maintenance, technology improvements, safety and security, and post-secondary prep materials. None of these things can be eliminated. All five of these major categories directly impact our students in this community. The state audits annually and does not have any concerns financially of our school district. The tax money is eleven percent and so eleven percent is made up by more than just teacher salaries alone. So our job, the job here is not to audit our school district. The job here is just to see where eleven percent is utilized and that is very evident. Um, I'm very grateful that you guys have are discussing a possible solution um, to better create accountability. Um, and I'm very grateful. I've never heard in my career of ten years of anyone wanting to defund or reduce funding in education. So I really appreciate you guys taking the time today to um, work with the school district to to keep our kids uh, as a number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Mike?
Mike, and then Leanna Tally is on deck.
Mike, would you just state the town, city of your residence?
Mike Demuth with, uh, Florson.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Demuth. I'm the chairman of the Woodland Park School District, um, District Accountability Committee. And I'm here representing the pa- this panel of eighteen parents, community members, teachers and district administrators who are appointed to review and advise district policy, budgeting, student and academic growth, district safety and security, parental engagement and more. After collecting data throughout the school year uh, regarding all of these aspects of the district, we see how tight the Woodland Park School District budget is. Some difficult decisions to con- to consolidate schools and close down a school have been made and in our educated opinion should have been made a decade ago. Uh, in reaching out to you, uh, I'm reaching out in to you in hopes that this group of people uh, can help advise you in the decision you have coming. This tax being thirty uh, to fifty percent paid for by tourists and at a higher rate by larger families who spend more in sales tax than smaller households does several positives that things for the district. One, right off of One, right off the top, it pays for the mortgage at Summit Elementary School in Divide. After that, the remaining funds go to the rest of the district uh, for teachers' salary, arts, theaters, sports, district safety and security and so on. I personally spoke with, with numerous teachers who also told me that they have to regularly use personal money out of pocket by uh, to buy basic classroom items to educate our children. Uh, our district is currently and has been funded at nineteen eighty-nine levels and um, taking away th- over three million dollars from the budget is just plain irresponsible. Uh, not much more uh, is more important than educating our children, and that directly affects us and our community. These children will be voting, working, taking care of us in hospitals and more in just a few short years. Don't you want to give them every opportunity to be educated? And would any of you want to live off of what you made in nineteen eighty-nine? Uh, as members of the District Accountability Committee, we strongly advise you as a city council, as active people in the community, as parents and as friends, to continue to fund the district with the tax that the community voted on. We all have our opinions about the district, the Board of Education, the superintendent, but we should set those opinions aside and continue to fund these schools with bipartisan support. Uh, school boards come and go, city councils come and go, um, but our children will remain. We want teachers who can afford to live here. We want children to be educated and ready for the adult world, and we want them to learn in a safe Woodland Park School District environment. This is not only your opportunity to do the right thing uh, for this community, but more importantly, to do the right thing for our children.
Thank you. And again, I'm gonna remind you all, this council does not intend to take away the tax. We've stated that this evening. So, thank you.
So we have.
Thank you.
We have Leanna, Leanna Tally and then Gwen Peckron.
My name is Leanna Tally. I am a Woodland Park resident, taxpayer and district parent. I am here to speak about the one point oh nine percent sales tax and financial reporting in Woodland Park School District. While I am not a district representative and do not present myself as such, I am and have been a licensed CPA in the state of Colorado for fourteen and a half years. I've worked in both private and public accounting. I was hired, though quickly resigned, as the CFO of Woodland Park School District in twenty twenty-two. And I am presently the CFO of Merit Academy. I have vast professional experience and a deep knowledge of school finance in this state. While I have been told that my association with Merit Academy invalidates my expertise, I can assure you that as a professional CPA, I am capable of objectivity and high ethical standards. I expect the same from each of you. My goal is to educate by providing truthful, accurate information, as I fear you are poised to make decisions based on rumors and half-truths. I am deeply concerned by the narrative shared that some of the district, that the district is misappropriating their funding. Increases in district expenditures from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three have been publicly broadcast as approximately two hundred percent. This may be alarming to a layperson, but a professional CPA and school finance expert can tell you this is related to accounting pronouncements Gatsby sixty-eight and seventy-five, which dictate accounting, financial reporting of para and related benefits. These actuarially driven salary and benefit calculations are detailed in a sixteen-page-long discussion in Notes Eight and Nine of the district's publicly available audited financial statements. These calculations are responsible for financial volatility in all school districts. For Woodland Park School District from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three, the financial statement impact was nine point five million dollars. And it alone explains the majority of the expenditure increases year to year. For Manitou over the same period, the impact was seven point seven million. This volatility affects all districts and is not nefarious and is not fraud. The complexity of school finance coupled with a superintendent and school board that are despised by many has created the suspicion of fraud and nefarious practices among some. Now, these same individuals are pushing for a revocation of sales tax dollars under the guise of needing more transparency. The analysis I just provided was completed with public information. Line item accounting is publicly available already on the district's website. The transparency is there. The people just need an objective, qualified professional to help them understand it. There's already been many people speaking about the critical importance of our sales tax dollars. I just want to add that the cost savings of consolidating schools that the district has done for next year serves to balance the budget, not create a budget surplus. Consolidation was needed to adjust district spending due to declining enrollment. Don't pull the funding when the district is just now breaking even. Public education is important, and so are our children, and I'm happy to meet with you all individually or as a group to discuss this further, and I will be emailing you as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gwen?
We have Gwen Peckron and Dr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Gwen Peckron, Woodland Park. Thank you, Council and Mayor. This was written prior to this meeting. I have made some changes. I would like you to imagine a scenario with me. Imagine a group of people elected to a governing body. Imagine their goal was to counter another governing entity's management, an entity they loathe and make unfounded accusations despite the fact that the other entity is also elected by the people to run a larger, complex system. Imagine this governing body, a council, chose to censor the other governing body, a board, by revoking a sales tax that funds eleven percent of their budget, a revenue stream that allows the board to raise salaries to provide athletics, arts, music, support services, and STEM programs for their children, to make necessary facility improvements. Imagine the hardships this places on thousands of children, current and future, and hundreds of staff and their families because a seven-person council finds control in counseling, in canceling the revenue. This is reality, not a soundbite. Now imagine the citizens, following council's example, decide to use their position to address the council's divided relational decision, lack of future vision and authority through a citizens initiative to cut city sales tax. This would force the council to manage an eleven percent cut in funding within their own complex system. Imagine that this citizen initiative passes. Well, this would never happen. Who would be un- naive enough to cut funds to a complex and challenging system that serves students and residents? Who would be short-sighted? And entertain the funding these programs? Who would trade in a revenue stream that favors the consumer, brings in one-third of funding from tourists, and alleviates the burden from property owners and businesses? Who indeed? But for entertainment's sake, let's imagine the citizens initiative passes because of some of the community's disdain of Woodland Park School District is so thick. Imagine that in July of twenty-five, the council needs to cut one point three million dollars in the middle of a fiscal year. What do they cut? The salaries of the people who simply do their jobs, serving the public? The fleet of vehicles for operation and maintenance, the proposed reservoir, legal expenses, facilities? This tax is critical for our schools and our community health. I appreciate the discourse, and I am grateful and thankful for your support of our students, staff, and schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kaufman. And then on deck, we have Logan Roots.
Would you please share with us your city of residence?
I'm Dr. Kaufman. I live here in uh, Woodland Park.
Thank you, sir.
Bet. I'm a recent transplant here to Woodland Park. I came from uh, serving my twenty-year prison sentence in Denver. Metaphorically speaking. I came here with my family to enjoy the small town. I grew up in a small town, Hot Sulphur Springs, if you're familiar. I wanted to come back to something like that and that my kids enjoy that. I'm encouraged to hear uh, how you guys are talking about keeping this tax. And what's really important to me, as I think about this for my kids, I've got a middle schooler and a high schooler. It's not that they have a great education, that's, I think, baseline. But what's part of that education? All the extra things uh, that some of us just didn't have. And we really want that for our kids. So I'm really grateful to hear that this is now on the table for, for these resources, these dollars to be available, to go beyond just what I think we all would expect in a small town as we come together. Uh, just like when we had four feet of snow and we decided to shovel out the neighbor. Right? That's what we're talking about. Uh, so I'm, I'm glad to hear uh, a shift here and a perspective on what are we actually doing and what's actually being added in as opposed to being subtracted from? So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next. Logan. And then on deck, we have Erin Hellstrom.
Logan, could you give us your full name and city of res- residence, please?
Yes, absolutely. Familiar faces after, how are you doing? My name is Logan Roots. I'm from Woodland Park, Colorado, and when I say I'm from Pa- Woodland Park, Colorado, I mean that I am from Woodland Park, Colorado. I have lived here my entire life, other than for the two years that I lived up in Denver to go to college. First, I, I wanna just talk about the irony tonight. It is, it has been incredible, the speeches that we have gotten from, from so many dedicated uh, members in our community to, to speak out about what they, what they believe in. Unfortunately, I, I disagree with many of them. Um, but I am, I'm happy that we are here and uh, having a conversation about things. In two thousand sixteen, our community voted to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the expectation that it would be executed with transparency and integrity for the benefit of our students. Now, we stand at a crossroads where we must decide whether to uphold these values or to let them erode. The city council can't dictate or oversee the district's budget, nor should they. However, you do have a responsibility to ensure that any tax dollars you oversee are used appropriately, transparently, and with proper accountability. The school board has deliberately been circumspect with this council. If you fail to retract this tax, you send a message that their misappropriation of funds is acceptable as long as they do it discreetly. Not only does this undermine public trust, but it also sets a dangerous precedent. Removing the tax puts the power back in the hands of the voters, allowing them to decide how they want to move forward. The community elected you to oversee and promote growth of the entire community, not to serve special interests. By not removing the tax, you betray this trust. And you show that you prioritize the interests of a few over the needs of the many. Let's consider this carefully. If a public school district, which should already have its financials in order, cannot demonstrate responsible management of its current funds, how can we trust them to demonstrate responsible management of additional funds? Just as we expect any entrepreneur or business owner to prove their integrity when requesting funds, we must also hold our public institutions to the same standard. And our public school district funded by our pa- tax dollars, they are no exception. Earlier this year, Colorado passed legislation that restores full funding to public school districts. And while I recognize that funding does not come through immediately, however, that does make this funding unneeded technically. And I will be the first to admit that school districts, public school districts, always need more money. But.
Logan, your time is up. If you could please wind up.
I absolutely will. I have a couple more points.
Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, I lost my place. I have to figure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but maybe you could save it for the next meeting.
I think that it's important for now.
Thank you.
However, as someone who worked for the district at the administrative level, I can attest to the level of corruption and mismanagement that runs rampant through this so-called leadership. Just a few of their accomplishments, they've thrown over a million dollars away in grants. Those were going to teacher salaries. They threw those away, but now they need this money. They have fired staff for alleged financial reasons.
And ask you to please finish up in the last two.
Without warning or community input, and they have driven one-third of teachers away. I am very, very disappointed that you guys are up here talking about not withholding the tax.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to have interrupted you. Just trying to keep it fair.
So we have Erin Hellstrom and Jake Marcus on deck.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Case, for uh, allowing us to speak and your comments tonight. You know, one thing that keeps hitting me is this was passed by the people in perpetuity. Yes, you have the right to remove and to take away. But what is your justification? I've yet to hear any concrete evidence of justification of why this sales tax should be removed. I've not seen anyone arrested. I've not seen any empirical evidence to support a claim of impropriety, yet I hear allegations. And under the False Claim Act, House Bill twenty-two, eleven nineteen, as an elected official, unofficial duty, you shouldn't be making these comments. You can be held liable and you can be held under civil law. See, as an elected official, you've created this issue, making comments that shouldn't have been made. Sales tax was passed by the people to help the school out because it's underfunded. Now, uh, the Board of Education President Carol Greenstreet in twenty sixteen stated the reason that she asked the council to do this, why the school needed it was one, increase in staff salaries, employee recruitment, safety upgrades, facilities, building, maintenance and upgrades, facilities. Under student recruitment, they had new trade programs, new high school, college credit courses, improved tech and create new programs to improve student achievement. And lastly, pay off debt, which they did, C O P. Now, this was in twenty sixteen. The number one thing they said was increase staff salaries. And if you go on to the Woodland Park School District and go under financial accountability, you'll find budgets going all the way back twenty thirteen to present, and they have line items. Why aren't we looking this up? Because the first teacher pay raise wasn't done by any of the previous boards. It was done by this board who is actually enacting what they said they were going to do to recruit and retain. And now we're penalizing this board for enacting what they said they were gonna do. So if we go to page four, and this is the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen approved budget for the Woodland Park School District. It lists for the sales tax, budgeted sales tax uses by category twenty eighteen, nineteen. Number one, salaries and benefits, fifty-seven point nine percent, one point two nine million. C O P lease payment, seven hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars, thirty-two point four percent. Facilities and maintenance, two point four percent, safety and security, two point four percent, technology, two point four percent. I P and P S, two point six percent, for a total of two point two two seven million dollars. It's right there. Well, that's not good enough. Let's go to current. Twenty-one and twenty-two, same thing. Twenty-two and twenty-three, two point nine million spent. Salaries listed, everything I just read off, it's there. Yet you make the accusation of a lack of transparency by this board. It's there. I understand COVID happened. And I saw the reports that were submitted, and they were inadequate, and I agree, there needs to be level of transparency. I just hope that as elected officials will be mindful of the things we say and the accusations without substantiated evidence under the False Claim Act. You can be held liable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jake Marcus with Patricia Hines on deck.
Hi, I, I will ask, I'm sorry, I'm be- being a little inconsistent. You could just share your name and your city of residence.
Sure. Uh, Jake Marcus, I live just outside of the city limits of Woodland Park, however, I've been a very longtime member of this community. Um, I am actually third-generation resident of Teller County. My kid, who is currently enrolled at Merit Academy, is a third generation in Woodland Park School District and fourth generation of Teller County. My two nieces are also third generation of Woodland Park School District. I was a panther, just the same as that gentleman, and my son is a bear. I am a conservative. I am glad to see that this board is here and they're taking a consensus to not cut this tax. That is something that I have great appreciation for because I have concerns as well. If, in fact, that tax was cut, one million dollars of that would actually come from tourists that come in from the county. It's not just the taxpayers within the county that provides this funding. It's tourism that also provides this funding. Three point two million dollars, I believe, is what was reported. One million of that is just from tourism. Our county increases in population every single year, every single summer, if not triples in population from tourism, from individuals coming up here to camp to enjoy our forest service. There's over sixty to seventy percent. There's over sixty to seventy percent of our county is forest service. So our community is small. Our community is incredibly small. And I hope and implore all of you to make sure that we keep this tax. People may not agree with me, however, I do firmly believe that if you don't agree with the Board of Education, wait for the next election. That's my opinion of that. Now, bullet points on what your discussion for your work session today. Obviously, I've already mentioned I'm a conservative, however, that population increase is something that we need to take into account. If we reduce that tax revenue or we take it away, then Woodland Park and Teller County residents are gonna be fitting the whole bill because that money's gonna have to come from somewhere. Uh Aspen, so Aspen was mentioned. Aspen has a huge tax revenue. If in, if you purchase something in Woodland Park, you're gonna purchase something in Aspen, and it's gonna be three times the cost because of markup and value and everything else. Unlike Blackhawk, we can't pull revenue from Cripple Creek. They have their own city, they have their own council. So that's something we have to seriously consider. We can't pull money from Cripple Creek. Uh line item, itemization on an entire budget. I think as far as breaking it down into the nitty-gritty details is very unrealistic and would have to go to as far as possibly hiring an individual accountant just for that. Now, the line items that have been broken down already, that's public record, that's easily available. Policy is written very broadly on purpose, so that way it's an easier guideline to focus on. We can't sit here and write line by line exactly what we need to focus on or what we need to do. Based on that, we need to have a thirty thousand uh foot view. Uh, one more point, and then I'll get out of here. Grants require an application process. I just want you to keep in mind that that grant process, if you're requiring schools to do that, is actually going to slow down the funds to get to our youth. So please keep that in mind, and a house divided cannot stand. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Patricia Hines with Patricia Perry on deck.
Tricia, if you would just share your city of re- residence, please.
Okay, I'm a resident of Woodland Park, although not within the city proper. I can see it from my house, though. Thank you, Mayor Case. Thank you, members of the council. The issues around the current IGA and its future come down to transparency and accountability. I have one question. If everything is above board with district finances, why is there so much resistance writing, providing answers about where funds are going? If there's nothing to hide, why not cooperate fully? Okay, that's two questions, I know. Given the recalcitrance of the superintendent and board around financial transparency, I feel they've severely damaged any assumption of goodwill or the benefit of doubt that otherwise might have been due to them. Ask the council to consider rewriting the IGA to clarify expectations, timelines, and guardrails for the use of our tax funds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you all for your quiet. It's really appreciated.
We have Patricia Perry and then Gail Garrett next.
I'm Dr. Perry. I live in Woodland Park. I'm gonna take you through in excruciating detail um, um, some of the funding line items specifically regarding Capturing Kids Heart. Uh, for the current school year, the district uh implemented Capturing Kids Heart, a program which is a social, emotional learning tool. People following this matter closely might be curious where the money is coming from. As in Kenwood's presentation to City Council on five sixteen, he highlighted how the city tax money is spent on innovation um in the current fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The other slide presentation showed the district was spending eighty thousand dollars on this innovation aspect of FY twenty-four. There is a line that says innovation and other. When asked about that, he said there were no examples of that and never had been. So eighty thousand dollars for um for um uh Capturing Kids Heart. Just to be perfectly clear, his presentation to the council was solely on how sales tax money is being spent by the district. So eighty thousand dollars on this Capturing Kids Heart program would probably be considered okay uh expense for the innovation programming um as a category of your sales tax money, except it wasn't. Um, sales tax money goes directly into the general fund. General fund is Fund Ten. When reviewing expenses based on Kenwood's statement, one would expect all of the capturing kids' expenses to be charged to the fund. When reviewing the general fund ledger through uh data accurate through four eleven, it's possible to, uh, there may be changes. You can see that five thousand six hundred and ten dollars was spent on food service presumably for training events. And you can also see that eight thousand dollars was spent from the general fund on software for this program. Um, that's it for charges that could be attributed to sales tax money and to capturing kids' heart through sales tax money. But that's not the extent of charges related to this program. The bulk of the cost of capturing kids' heart is in fact, uh fifty-three thousand seven hundred was paid with ESER funds. Those are federal uh tax dollars uh to support at um social, emotional learning, not sales tax money. The Fund Twenty-two uh noted um is designated for purpose grants. This grant number was four hundred, was four thousand four hundred and fourteen, the specific grant. In other words, Ken Witt was not being truthful when he told City Council the district is spending eighty thousand dollars of sales tax money this year on innovative programs, of which uh capturing kids' heart is the only uh program named. So for the current uh FY twenty-four, where Witt says we're spending eighty thousand dollars in sales tax money on capturing kids' heart, we've only spent thirteen thousand six hundred and ten dollars. So that's more than sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, you could do the math. Um, that is not explained or accounted for by this um slide presentation. Um, um, it's called into question to look at specific resolution passed on FYI twenty-four. The resolution authorizes expenditure for fund balance for specific purposes.
Yes, ma'am. If you could please wind up, your time is finished. Thank you.
Um, toward it differently, um, it's taken out of the reserve fund. Um, and um that authorizes a hundred thousand not um dollars from the reserve fund, not sales tax on capturing kids' hearts. So um I can provide the rest of you. You have an email with all of this and with slides. But you can see how inaccurate this picture was with specific details. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Gail Garrett with Drew DePatty on deck.
I'll quick say, Gail Garrett from Woodland Park.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think it's ironic that we wouldn't be here tonight if we had a superintendent and a Board of Education that were bipartisan, ethical, professional, and cared about the entire community. Some of this might be redundant, but I think there are a lot of community members that really don't understand or are not aware of the total dysfunction of our school district under this administration. They're not ethical. They are partisan. They are not transparent. There's no discussion with the stakeholders. There's no discussion among the board during a meeting. They are not fiscally responsible at all. In two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, there were three point two million more was spent than revenue. This year, it is projected that it will be two point one million or more more expenditures than revenue. The legal fees from a year ago were a hundred and seventy thousand. Prior to that time, they were around the sixteen thousand dollar mark. And I got a, a uh bill from the Brad Miller Farmer Law Firm. In October of twenty-one, Tim Farmer, Brad Miller's partner, billed this district for two hours of time, one hour at seven hundred and fifty dollars an hour. That is absurd. There is no firm in this area that charges those kinds of fees. And why our district would pay that is just unknown to me. There's no accountability. And I would say when someone commented on the merit budget, when you go online, their budget is one page and there is no line item. I would urge you with any agreement that you have that accountability for this school district under its current administration needs to be handled by someone outside of the district. They have lost trust from a lot of us, and there's reason for that. There are many, many more um examples of why someone does need to police um this district for us paying tax people. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Drew and then we have Kitten Walker on deck.
Good evening. Could you please share your residence, city of residence?
Certainly, Drew DePatty, Woodland Park.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for this public comment opportunity tonight. I I really appreciate it. I think this moves the debate forward. Counselor Harvey did a great job uh with her presentation. I mean, I've sat through so many presentations, being in the corporate world from great to really bad. You know, that that was good. Not great, that was good. Um, you did, you did a good job. Um, lots of good detail there, you know. I know you've done a little background work on me. I'll use that for in a future uh public comment. But I know you're in a stute political operative. So and it it showed, it showed tonight. So thank you for that. Who ran on defunding education? Who ran on laying off teachers? Who ran on putting our kids' mental health at risk? The answer is nobody. But um, you know, I mean, Carol, you, you were appointed, right? You were not, you weren't, you weren't on the ballot. Actually, she was appointed twice, I think. Maybe the city clerk can confirm that. So we have a uh twice-appointed counselor who's never, hasn't been on the ballot and is now jamming this highly controversial thing down our throats. What's going on here? Is a backroom deal to appoint an insider and to force this agenda on the people? Kind of curious. Now, do we have election deniers here? Do you deny the election of November twenty twenty-one school board when conservatives swept into office and cleaned up a complete mess? And then in November of tw- twenty twenty-three, where many of you supported the losing side, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars against the team that cleaned up the school system? I think we have a council of election deniers, but Carol can't be an election denier because she like, she actually wasn't elected. So that's where we are. We have a council threatening the democracy right here in Teller County. That's what's happening. It's a power grab. The fancy PowerPoint, all the smart analysis talk, that's, that's great in in a normal situation. But what we have here is a deep ideological divide headed up by someone who was appointed to the city council. And she's at the center of all divisive issues in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kitten Walker and then Suzanne Patterson.
Welcome. Could I just have the city of your residence, please?
Woodland Park.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. So I keep hearing about the division and building bridges. And I'd like to give some examples of how I personally have reached out to build bridges and those bridges have been um incapable of being built. So uh I'll start by announcing the Victory Life Church Forum and the invitation to the council and to the candidates. Jeffrey Gear and Steve Smith came over to me after that meeting and said, oh, it's on my calendar. Upon receiving my phone calls, personal phone calls for coffee, I received no, no response from Jeffrey Gear, and I got a no, thank you, I'm not available from Steve Smith. I was reaching out to build a bridge. These people were not allowing that bridge to be built. George Jones actually met me for coffee and said he would be at the forum. And two days before the forum, he emailed and said, no, thank you. I don't wanna attend Victory Life Church Community Involvement Team Forum. There again, a bridge was trying to be built and was prevented. Steve Smith and Jeffrey Gear, we were no-shows, no thank you, we're not interested, preventing the bridge. Let's move on to Terry Baldwin. She received a phone call from me for coffee and she did not respond. She received two emails and a phone call invitation to the forum and did not respond, preventing the bridge from being built. Kelly Case, no thank you to coffee, no thank you to the forum, preventing the bridge from being built. And actually, her text to me was, you come to me, you come find me, you go on my website, find a meet and greet, and you come to me. At the last city council meeting, I called you hypocrites. And I stand by that word because I'm still seeing no bridge being attempted on your sides. And I agree with Mr. DePatty that twice Carol Harvey was appointed. And actually, at the November ninth workshop, she blurted out, I will not pander to this community. Preventing the bridge for unity.
Kitty, your, your time is up. Do you have anything to talk about with regards to the sales tax in a few, in a few words?
Yes. I would like to see the bridge being built, starting on your side according uh regarding the sales tax.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, Suzanne.
Suzanne Patterson and then Carol Greenstreet.
Good evening, Suzanne. Is, could you state your city of residence?
Suzanne Patterson, Florissant.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, mayor, and the city council members. I just wanted to try to clarify some information um uh in reference to uh what you had said, Carol Harvey, about the um, the ESER funds. The ESER funds where um co- as everyone knows, COVID uh funds, emergency funds, um elementary and secondary emergency relief funds that I believe were ended last year. And the capturing kids' survey was paid, I believe, with the remaining because they, you had to use them up. And then the rest of the funds uh that covered the capturing hearts were from the sales tax.
Thank you, Suzanne.
And I also wanna, and um I spoke to Superintendent Witt, and he said that he'll be sending that information over to you if it wasn't clear in his presentation. And also in reference to the SROs, I do believe that we have a letter and that will all be, that will also be coming your way, just to clarify that from, from uh, I believe Chief Chris uh gave to us in reference that the, the CROs were no longer available. And uh we'll have the district reach out and give you that information as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Appreciate that.
And then we have Carol Greenstreet. And Carol is, oh, she's our final speaker, mayor.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Um, I um, uh, I don't remember who said the crystal ball piece. Um, but yes, in two thousand sixteen, we did not have a crystal ball. Um, and uh Mr. Hellson was correct. Those, uh, initiatives in terms of the needs for finances were what the board agreed upon at that time. Um, who is the president, so I was just the spokesman. I would argue, though, that there had been, um, raises given to teachers ever since that sales tax was passed. Um, I am certain of that. I cannot tell you how much. Um, and what I want to say next, I want to be really crystal clear about something. What I want to talk about is administrative salaries and teacher salaries and the importance of the, um, sales tax for that. And where I want to be crystal clear is I am not talking about Merit Academy. While Merit Academy is part of the district, they are run separate from the superintendent and the Board of Education in determination of any salary structure. I do not know what their salary structure is. That's not what I'm talking about here. So just to be crystal clear on that. Um, I think one of the things that we knew in twenty-sixteen when we went, when we asked for this is that we had an administrative staff that was committed to teacher salaries. Um, we are still low in our district. Um, we are at the bottom mid in teacher salaries for the district, the traditional schools. Our administrator in terms of superintendent salary is at upper mid. We are a declining district by in the last two years, a hundred and fifty students that choice out, not, not, not birth rate, but choice. And so the administrators have less to oversee, but the teachers still have the same number of kids in their classrooms. Um, this year, the superintendent got maybe a nine percent raise. Um, I will be surprised if teachers get that raise. And in fact, many of you know, they received an email today with a warning that if you guys cut the tax, their salaries would probably be cut. Um, we had an administrative team that ensured that their percentage salary increase was never higher than the teacher salary increase. I don't know if that can be put into an IGA, but that would help ensure that it was what that was really intended for. If we can make sure the teacher's salary increases were at least as much, if not more, than administrative. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect time. All right. Thank you, folks, everyone, for your public comment. We do appreciate it. And, um, I think she took, is there anyone online that has asked just?
There's nobody that has asked to speak.
Okay.
We do have, um,
For reminding.
We have thirty-six people watching.
Excellent.
Yes.
All right. Counsel, any further discussion that you'd like to have? Staff, Suzanne, you'll share, and I know Erin's online with, with what the council would like to, the information the council would like to have. Yes?
Sure.
Maybe.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Anything else that you all would like to discuss at this point?
Mayor, you had, oh, you had asked me.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Would you please share?
Mayor Case had asked me, um, to share with the council and with the audience that in addition to the public comment this evening, we also received a total of twenty-nine emails that have all been forwarded to the council. And I have printed here for public record. And, um, we went through, I went through them and we had twenty-two of those individuals that were looking at, um, the council canceling or modifying the sales tax. And then seven individuals that were against the council modifying or canceling the sales tax.
Thank you for sharing that with the public. All right. Anything else that you all would like to discuss or share?
I, I don't think any discussion, but I did want to thank, uh, all the folks for attending, speaking up. Uh, much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for your comments and, and thank you for being respectful and, and doing, not clapping in and all of that thing. I, I really appreciate that and complying with the time limits. Have a great evening.